So. Budget. Calendar, the two twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget calendar was presented in the actual packet. And so for the public to have a copy of. And at this time, it's just being provided for you to check it against your personal schedules to make sure that dates for the most part work. If they do not work for you, if you would please just send myself, possibly City Administrator Hill and the Budget Chair, the three of us, is that?
That works.
That works. A notice of which anything that you cannot, I guess, maybe let's stick to that, that you can, that is, does not work for your schedule. And then we, if we have multiple council members that cannot attend certain meetings, we will try to shift and to make sure that we accommodate the most council member's schedules set. So that they can attend. The intention, you will see, if you look down at the budget calendar, there are some immediate meetings in there, and those are built in along the way to make sure that we have enough meetings, meeting slots. And if we do not need them, we will then cancel them, but they're at least there assigned and planned at this time. And then at the Budget Finance Meeting on Wednesday, and we'll just take a minute to say that, Wednesday, June fifteenth, we will go over in deeper discussion on this calendar. But for this evening, I just wanted to present it, let everybody have it in order to compare to their, to their personal schedule, so that we can have a deeper discussion on it.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So thank you, Lindsay, for doing that. Was it a paper copy? Because I didn't see a link on the, on the agenda.
And I will, it's not on the agenda. I thought that I, okay.
That's okay. I'll come by after the meeting and pick one up. So, yeah, don't fret. Thanks.
Bill's gonna email you one.
Right now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just on, on point, thank you. Thank you very much, Director Vaughn, for this. And a couple of, I found out today that I do have one conflict, so that's on July twenty eighth, and Director Vaughn and Minister are going to be looking for a way to sort that out. Then a couple other quick thoughts to the, the question of canceling these meetings, they don't leave in the past. Some members of the public have taken issue with when we cancel meetings, but at the same time, the reason for having these additional meetings is if we need them, and I'd rather err on the side of having more time than less time. So this is a very deliberate action to ensure that we have a particular amount of time. It has nothing to do with cancellation of meetings, has nothing to do with, it means we're being efficient, I guess is what I should say, it's, we're, we're on target and we don't need additional time. So I wanted to put that into kind of into the record for everybody's consideration. And the other thought I wanted to say is that it is a busy schedule. So as Director Vaughn indicated, if you can't make one of the meetings, you know, everyone will do the best we can to accommodate as many people as possible, but don't, don't feel terrible about it, because it's, it is a lot of meetings. So it's great if everybody can be there, but at the same time with, you know, practically two dozen items, there's chances are that it will be one or two that maybe could look people.
Yeah, I know, obviously, I'm going to be out of the country sometime, but as I look at this, what I see is that it's the, it's the post-budget presentations. So I'll have that in writing, and I'll, I'll be sure to study that before we get to deliberations and recommendations in early October, which I'll be back for. So I'm not quite so, so stressed about the weeks I'll miss in September, because I think I can catch up in all of that. And I'll, I'll review the, the video of the department presentations. I'm a public comment.
Welcome, Sarah. If you don't get John, we were talking about the, the confirmation review calendar. I don't know if you've got a copy, or Bill will send you a copy.
Just came in my email. Thanks, Matt.
At a glance, how many of these meetings are not either a normal city council meeting or a Budget Finance Committee meeting? Say special, adjacent to a topic or the meeting type, excuse me.
On the right-hand side.
Okay, so it looks like it's one in September, or X one, late July, mid-September, and then mid-November are the only ones that would not be the normal second or fourth Thursday of the month.
Yeah, next week, yeah. Thanks for preparing this.
I do want to, this is the only change for the council members that have been here, the only change, significant change, I would say, is that this year, instead of breaking out department presentations in multiple, where the intent that you will see on September seventeenth is to do it on a Saturday in order to condense them together, so we can walk through to make sure all of the new council members are brought along, and we have all the directors in a meeting together, so that if questions kind of go across departments, then it's helpful for us to all be there to answer together. So that is, that is probably the only, and I have stated that to all, all of the directors are aware of that date, that meeting, but that is something that I definitely want to point out very early and bring to your attention, that it is a Saturday meeting. So following Philippa's comment, I will also be out of the country for two meetings only, though. The fifteenth and the seventeenth. So as Philippa said, I will, you know, read the materials, listen to the presentations and the public comments, and be ready for the October and November conversations. So I will not be able to do that, because I'll also be in a different mindset.
Hopefully, different mindset.
I'm trying to catch up. All the things that I did during the pandemic, so.
Thank you, Ms. Rick. I, thank you, Lindsay, for pointing out that the Saturday, I conflated, I just looked down, and I went Thursday, Thursday, I was thinking it's Thursdays all the way down. And so I think it's going to be outstanding for us to be able to be together, to be able to see it sort of in linear fashion, and then be able to ask questions of the department that's in one sitting, rather than make it out of a series of three or, three or two or three meetings. So thank you very much.
Subject I'd like to thank you in advance, because since I was elected, it's a very big deal to me for the budget system to be very clean and neat. I don't want to run into December when the holidays are here. I thank Lindsay, Tom, everybody, we did way back, we never even had a calendar, this kind of, well, I was, I say so. Work to it, and I'll make sure I do my part to get it to you, but, you know, it's, it's going to be the same way. Yes, council member, real.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that the July twenty eighth special work session and business meeting, I, twenty-five percent chance I can make it, just depends, we're, we're headed out. And if we get there in time, I can call in. If not, I won't be able to, and I will be out for the September seventeenth, which is the detailed presentations. Unfortunately, was not anticipating a Saturday.
What's true, informational, that's right, no actions, so.
I think it's really important for the three council members that, that's what we, so, you know, it's the ones who think are the longest, Tom, Tom's either to guide this correct.
Well, if we don't do forum, I might.
Yeah.
You don't have to be there either, so.
Okay, anybody other questions on this? See, none, I'm gonna turn it over to Mayor Strange for the Council Discussion Conference.
Yes, so we've already covered the budget calendar. Did we have something on the confirmation of the calendar? Was there? There was nothing for that. No, it's just an item on the, on the list. Okay, so make sure we didn't miss that. Oh, okay, so that's, okay, I'm reading, okay. And now Mr. Bennett is going to be talking to us about Chapter sixteen fourteen Tree Canopy Preservation and Enhancement, the tree code, provisions that came recommended to us by our tree board. And as I mentioned, Mr. Bennett, well, I'll let you describe the, the process, because we have some new thoughts that came in since the, or made it where at the last meeting. Thanks to a couple council members for putting, putting that together.
Sure. As Mayor, Mayor, we're taking some time for this, I think. Good goal for this discussion would be just to see what's, there's an consensus on generally in the tree board recommendations, and in this new provision that we've been discussing since this, the appeal, she came to light. And, you know, I get the sense that there, there is a sense of urgency to adopt what we can. So, so maybe, as we just put this presentation, that Bill is, I've got this computer, just kind of hit the high points, the major changes that we're talking about, and then see if there's consensus about, you know, a certain setup, and we could move forward with potential for adoption by the end of next month. So, next slide. So these are the areas in yellow that the tree board suggested changes to, and the one with the red arrow is the section seven oh seven, is the, the one where we find this, this new amendment council is discussing on some level. So, next slide, please. And you called the, the tree board chair, talk a little bit about this policy change on the, it's in the, the first part of the regulations. I know, I know there was a little bit of discussion about some additions to that, that language. And so that's something that we, that we could treat kind of the same way, this other change, we've been talking, council members about it. If you have some additional language you'd like to see in this, that would be great. If you wanted, if it's a pretty simple change, we can just talk about it right now, but I, I think, council member. As we have, so I remember you speaking fairly open up to changes you'd like to make in this section.
No, because I'm lying back here.
That's, okay, we can come back to that, but, you know, this is, this is, you know, essentially a preamble, and if there are, there are small feelings about changing some of it, you know, I think that can be done as it moves, you know, through the discussion. The idea here is that when we come back with a true draft ordinance, that, that you would have, you might have some optional language to, to look at, the whole council look at. So if that's acceptable to council members, and that we could bring forward other changes from council members into the next draft, we could see them as options as you can draft at the next meeting. So, yeah, if there's not any other discussion about that, we can go on to the next one. And that is.
So, but Steve, before you go on, just, I'm just trying to, to remind myself of what it was I was concerned about in this policy discussion, that the policy statement here. Is this the one that we saw originally?
This is the one that we looked at, right, please. This is the language directly from the tree board. I also not recall exactly what it concerns, but I think, I think it was more along more detail about climate change types, type of statements.
Okay.
Steve, are you looking for, like, indications where we generally think we know we're paper and generally where we have issues? Are you looking for that where you're to mind?
Yeah, if, especially if you have issues with one of the changes that's, that's recommended here, that would be, I think, helpful to, to give that feedback tonight in a formal fashion. And so, like in this, this next proposal, it's still, this is in the definition section, first of the definition changes from the tree board, where they're recommending reducing the, the threshold diameter of the exceptional trees. You know, I think their justification is simply, it's kind of simplified, it's, it'll be thirty-six, and we, you know, preserve more trees to be protected under the exceptional tree threshold. But, you know, I think, you know, it may be worth, you know, give us a little time to get you some more information about what the potential ramifications of that could be, before you make a decision on it. I'm not suggesting take it out of the draft at this point, but, you know, if anyone else has any thoughts about it, question.
I do, because I think that of all the changes, this is the one that citizens might be surprised by and have consequences. And so getting that data would be helpful, but I do think that in terms of public input, this would be something we would want to flag for public input on, just because we don't want, we, we want full transparency and information, and because this tightens the requirements and this has regulatory consequences, I, I, it's not that I'm against this, I just think it needs to have more flagging for public conversation. But having the data on what the consequences would be would be helpful both for me and for the public. So again, I'm not against it, I, I agree with, I like the idea of simplification. I'm just worried there are people who could get caught up in surprise or in the net of regulation who, who think they aren't there right now, so.
Just, like, say one thing, what concerns me on this is, if it was that easy, they did this originally, it wouldn't have taken months and months to get this exact table out.
That's right.
It's a very, very intense conversation with council member. We chose, yeah, this was a big deal, so for some reason it was a big deal then, so it can't be this simple, not the same, we need to check into that, because it was definitely one of the touchy subjects on this.
Thank you, kind of reinforces, I think, the point I was making.
Next slide. Well, just another quick comment, I think, and then council member, for twenty guys commented minutes as well. I, I just was gonna say, I completely agree with Councilman Bodie on this, sort of the unintended consequences question, because the last time that we, we took a look at this ordinance, it was really interesting, because on there was, there were two, two camps, everyone was pro-environment and pro-trees, but they had different approaches to how to get there. And so I agree wholeheartedly on streamlining the code, and I applaud the, the thought of trying to make it, you know, sort of simpler kind of numerically, but at the same time, I think we do need to kind of look at what, what are the consequences of this, and make sure that we're not surprising the community again, because I believe that last, one of those last meetings, the meeting that I'm referring to, I think we had over a hundred and twenty people attend. So they definitely, some passions are high when it comes to that, the diameter topic. Yeah. That's a better, good timing.
I thank you, and twofold. One of them is, I want to share my colleague's concern about changing this, you know, rather precipitously. I guess my question is, I'm too lazy to look this up, but are there minutes from the tree board meeting when these original numbers, not the crossed out, the crossed out ones, not the new ones, were adopted? Because there was probably a reason for the differences between different species. And part two of that is related to that, does the tree inventory go into enough depth that we can actually see how many more trees would be affected of each kind? Thank you.
We didn't have a tree board back then, so we got to be mentioned then, but I'm sure we have, it's talked by the council. I'm sure that's very extensive. Yes, but I'd say, the more information we can get to you, so you guys don't have to be, we'll. We'll locate to that. Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I agree with the simplification of policies and, and code is always the right way to go, but I, I also recognize, as, as my colleagues have, that this simplification may have those unintended consequences. And I remember we were looking at actual, you know, largest tree sizes for each species, and as I recall, it was, as you said, very in-depth. So I think we need more time on this to really understand what it is.
Yeah, I'll agree, and I like data. And another type of data I'd like to see is, has the, have, have these numbers caused confusion? And that simplification, for the sake of simplification, isn't really a driving factor, there should be a reason to simplify. So it might there be a case where someone thought they had a Douglas fir that was thirty-six inches, so they could cut it down, but then it turned out it was a grand fir, which would mean it was too big and they couldn't, and so, like, has, have the different numbers caused confusion? And so that would be a reason to look at simplification.
Any other questions on this slide?
Yeah, thank you. So these are some other changes, definitions they, I think are helpful, most part, in terms of Grove is replacing the term stand, and stand was never defined, so that's, that's a good one. And the top of the tree, as the tree board mentions in their, their notes, it's on the side of the document, receiving the agenda cover, there are some times when doing some of things that previously discussed, actually, you could do the tree, so, so this, this should be helpful. And then, you know, it is, it will be easier to kind of, with this change in the definition tree, to, to maybe sort out the fighting from the efficient trees, and, you know, so I think that's probably the change, too. Any, any thoughts, comments about that, definitions?
It's very intuitive to me.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize, I heard two people talking, was that me?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay. Yeah, for Grove, one of the, in the comments, it mentioned kind of starting with the single family, smaller zoning and kind of rounding down. But thinking about that means kind of a Grove could never really legitimately exist on our smallest lots. So I'm wondering if there's, if that, where, what that seven thousand square feet really means across actual properties, you know? So just a thought to, to understand more about that, rather than aligning it with land use code, like, is there another size that we could think of that's more driven by the trees and the health of the trees?
Anything else? Next slide. So this is the, the change that, in context, now code in terms of establishing a fourteen-day waiting period. You won't find it in the annotated draft that you have, but next version, you can see it like this, if there's not any issues with it. So this, this waiting period would apply to major tree groups, those are the ones that require harvest review. Landmark trees sort of the higher level. So for the major trees or permit is issued, the site got to be posted, they wouldn't be able to do the activity until fifteen days after the treatment has been issued, posted, matched up on the same day. But for minor treatment events, which are the ones where we allow someone to take out one tree or two trees every thirty-six months, that they would be able, still be able to take that action, commence their activity, tree removal activity immediately. So, second part is just kind of informational, really, that, that you have fourteen days to appeal this notice of decision. The meat of it is in that section G, they're establishing formally the waiting period, which does not exist. Thoughts or comments about that?
Just so I understand, so if you have a major treatment, so if major treatment permits, you're moving, that's fifteen days after issuance, it's a good. But then you, your appeal period is fourteen days. How does this work?
So, on the, the day of decision.
Decision of the city?
We, we, we issue the permit, we call that a decision process. And so when that permit is issued, you have fourteen, to close the business on that fourteenth day to appeal it. So I think.
Right, so if you appeal it, there's an appeal.
There's an appeal, so.
But you can cut the tree down the day, the next day. Because it says fifteen days after the decision.
Once there, once there is an appeal, it already says in the code that all action is state, permit is state, can't do anything. You know, it, it is, kind of, you know, it does seem strange that we, sort of, it's unique, because, you know, tree, tree permits, they're, you know, once it's done, it's done, right? Whereas like a building permit, if they start their activity, you know, it's somewhat undoable if the appeal goes against them. Treatment, you know, it's really difficult to, to, so, so that's, I think, why we're, this, this came about, you know, we have this appeal right now, and we brought the issue to a head. Fortunately, the, the applicant did adhere with our advice not to take the action. Tried a couple times, but, you know, there was some neighborhood dissent about it, and so, right now, the trees, and this particular one, have not been cut down, and the appeal is a valid appeal, so they're going to.
Maybe it's just redundant, but fifteen days after the issuance, it's a good. Unless, if you say, you say add that, add that, just unless you think it's redundant, it would just make the person reading it, so you don't have to. Like I.
No, I, I'm strongly in favor, this is what, at our last Thursday meeting, some members of the public brought this to us, and they also commented at the last tree board meeting. I think it's good to close that loophole where people can cut down a tree before an appeal is lodged, irreversibly.
And I would like for us to, to figure out the schedule for getting this piece passed, and I, I would recommend that we pass this before, would we not wait for all the rest of the pieces of the tree code? That, I wondered what my colleagues would think of that.
Looking at all of this, I'd be okay with going ahead with the package, except for the change in the diameters on an expedited basis, because I think some of the provisions are more in the mode of clarifications, or making things easier to implement as opposed to tightening up on things. So just a, that saying yes, plus.
Yeah, thank you very much, customer cast over. I actually communicated with, with Steve about making sure that we as quickly as possible affect the changes, particularly in this, in this regard. We do have, we basically waiting periods, it has to go through the Department of Commerce, we have considerations that way. But I, I think that the diameter, to your point, Councilman Bodie, I think the diameter question is going to take a little bit more, not only data, but I think it's going to take a little bit more input, potentially. I too would be very comfortable. I'm comfortable with all the other language and particularly the, this that closes that, that loophole. Um, I was actually on the phone with Councilmember Goldman when I was, he called me when I was on a run and I ran up the hill after that. Sorry, Larry, I was very out of breath by then, but, um, but I did stop by the site there to take a look at the, the considerations. And one of the things that, that I was concerned about that, and I don't want to get into that into, quite as I did just show things here, Steve, so please stop me if I start stepping on toes. The, the notification, I mean, the pictures I took, I was very surprised. I mean, the posting, it, you literally, you can only see it if you're like looking for it. And it's, it seems quite from, it literally, I would say probably two hundred and seventy degrees you can't even see the nose, uh, which is going to strike me. And so I don't know whether there's, probably doesn't fall under the curvy with the tree ordinance specifically, but it's a broader notification consideration.
Yeah, the, the, the tree, when that time, the, our other managers kind of say that it has to be posted.
Yeah.
Consiquitous place, you know, something to that effect. And, uh, you know, so, uh, the, the applicant's development now.
Okay. Yeah, must have been. Thank you.
So with that in mind, maybe I just have it written closely now. Do you want to entertain any revisions to make sure that permits are consistent?
I can show you the language. It's not, it's not actually in the tree code section. It's like, it's referring to the manager's process that should make sure that that's part of what the material is received next to the discussion.
Yes. So if I could ask a question here, the, you mentioned that this has to go through the Department of Commerce. What changes have to, anything that we do to the tree, um, code has to go to them?
Yes, since the tree code is a land use ordinance, it's land use, then we have to go through that Department of Commerce process. This is what we're doing with the, uh, just started that today for the, uh, the, the DTS recommendation to.
And how many is that?
It's, um, it's technically sixty days, but they, they do expedited review and usually it's something like this. They'll, they'll get it done within the same timeframe in CEPA, which we have to do as well. That's about four to six weeks. So my estimation, uh, there was, we could get this done. Ready to adopt it by the second meeting in July.
Yes, member Riddle.
Thank you. Uh, there is, um, in that sixteen fourteen oh forty D one slash two, I guess, uh, does note for the, what the, uh, number of days you have to post before, um, you can even get an approved permit. And just thinking of what my colleagues have been saying, um, I don't see any, I don't see any like restarting that time clock if their, uh, permit document is not posted correctly, like if it can't be read or it's, it's not visible. Is that something that is in another part of the code or would that, we want to look at that sixteen fourteen forty D and add some language that if it's not properly posted, that the clock starts again?
I would see an issue with, uh,
Oh, well, my comment was more kind of like big picture timeframe. So maybe I'll defer that till after we finish going through the specific sections.
Thank you, very good. My, my thought is, Steve, unless this, would that be something we revisit in the broader section of the land use code rather than doing it within here because it would be applicable to other circumstances potentially as well?
Bring that up to the next.
Well, I was gonna, I think we have a couple more, I do have a couple more slides. I'll, I'll wait till the end.
Yes, it just, it is sometimes a little challenging to hear you. I apologize. Uh, it sounds like you've got a mic in the middle. If you could try a little louder, I'd appreciate that a lot.
Sure. Right, um, so moving on to the next one, please.
That's it.
That's it. That's there. Okay.
So do you, Steve, I. That is a slide.
So this, this change is, uh, something that really kind of bubbled up from, uh, Arborist and myself in terms of, uh, kind of the, the situation is creating a lot of hardships for people who've had trees on steep slopes. And the recommendation is always the same, that they leave the stump in place, um, you know, when they cut down the tree. Uh, and so we think that moving the, from a requirement that there be a geotechnical review of a tree as on a steep slope to one that where the administrator can, um, request one if, if, if there's a reason for it, uh, would be helpful to a lot of folks. Cause we do have a lot of people with, uh, you know, who otherwise need to, you know, the way in steep slopes is just need a risk criteria. If, uh, the tree has a certain risk. And, and so, uh, this, this change would, uh, move things along for a lot of folks that, you know, may have trees that are, are undermining foundations and things like that. So that's where that change is coming from. Questions about that one?
So I guess one of the, uh, would be determination of the steep slope. And if you get a permit, is somebody going to check to see if that's on a steep slope?
Yeah, but we, we, whenever we have, someone, someone comes in, they just fill out a, a regular tree permit application. So we, we fair enough whether or not this is, uh, going to trigger a major or it's, it's a, uh, a tree, uh, in a critical area, just using our maps. And then it's sort of, uh, on the, uh, the applicant to show that it's not in a critical area. It's not a steep slope. So we'll, we'll, um, we'll change the nature of their, their permanent application based on what we find out through our investigation of the, of the, uh, permit of, of the proposed. So the review process, you would just look at the maps to see whether or not you think the tree might be. Yeah, we start with the maps that would go to county geographic system, information system, I map. That you can put contours on that. So that helps us narrow down further whether there's a steep slope or not. And if it's any, you know, doubt, we say, you know, what do you give us pictures or do you cite the arborist? If the arborist did, you're going to cite this anyway. Usually when it's on a steep slope, you know, they, they've, uh, they've gotten an arborist involved, uh, as well. Other comments? That's it.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, no, but one more. Okay, so this is from the tree board and, and we have this series of, um, more like goals, it's not part of the, the, uh, the tree code. It's, uh, the emphasis, you know, saying that emphasis should be placed on doing certain things. So the tree board is just saying, let's turn this up another notch. When you're looking for what your replacement tree should be, if you've got, you're moving a native tree, then it will be, uh, should be, the replacement tree should be a native. You know, if the arborist finds that there's good reason, they could allow you to do something else. And then if it's, uh, if it wasn't a native tree, then or if it was, uh, some kind of landscaping tree, then you should put in some sort of evergreen to replace it. So they're, they're just, uh, kind of, you know, I think, I think all of the, uh, the inventories we've done have, you know, shown that, you know, that the evergreens are the predominant, uh, species, uh, so they're, we're just reflecting that, what's, you know, uh, coming from the community forest manager plan as well. So thoughts about this one?
I like this. I have one clarification. So it's in the general tree list, but I don't remember. Does it make a distinction to whether a tree is an evergreen or not?
I believe it does, uh, but I'll double check that.
Okay. Cause I think that's important. If we're suggesting that people replace trees with evergreens, then that information should be in, in the general tree list. So now I know it does make a distinction between native versus non-native. And if it could also include evergreen versus non-evergreen.
I appreciate where this is going. I think the one thing I would say is it doesn't seem to address the, the, um, you know, climate change and climate resilience trees. And I'm wondering if we want to come back with the climate action plan and, and revisit this section to think about selecting not only native and evergreen, but climate resilient species as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with that, but I, I, I do think that's not something to deal with now. I do think that that's, that's the work of the, um, action committee. And that would be a really interesting, you know, it's a research to, to consider.
Thank you. You know, I think in this, we establish a lot of requirements. Yeah, I think there are many native deciduous trees. And so I'm not sure that we should always say to the homeowner, if you're replacing a non-native tree, it's to be replaced with a.
Any other thoughts?
I, I kind of agree with that. Just, thanks for raising that. I didn't really think about that, but I think that, uh, more flexible. It could be encouraged rather than mandated.
I'm not sure the language says mandated, should it be? Has it? Right, it's hard for me to, it's, it splits the, it splits from one page to the next. It's a bit hard to go through.
Think what it says. So if a native tree is replaced, it's got to be another native tree.
Right.
And if a non-native evergreen is replaced, then it's got to be an evergreen, preferably a native evergreen. And if it's a non-native, non-evergreen, then it says, just go to the general tree list. So I think that's what it's saying.
I, I think that's what it's saying too.
I think we should have flexibility.
Councilmember.
I think Councilmember Riddle was first.
Okay, we haven't spoken on this subject, so I'm gonna let you go first.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so yeah, you know, this is a tricky one because of course, when a tree falls naturally and is replaced, you're going to get a bunch of deciduous like big lake maples just keep popping in there and alters. And they have their own place in the ecosystem because of course they harbor certain kinds of, um, um, attended species and so forth. And so the question is by replacing straight up with evergreen for evergreen, do we lose that phase where there might be some other knock-on effects with other species, including critters that, uh, were missing? So this is nuanced and I don't know if I'm okay with it yet. I have to think about it.
Thank you. I would agree that anytime we could put a native tree, we should emphasize that. So I think providing that flexibility with an evergreen tree, uh, replacement would be appreciated. I also recognize, uh, Councilmember Forotani's comment that there are definitely value to deciduous trees in the ecosystem. Um, so I think we should look at a slight revision to this area.
I'm reading, but I would say this overregulation and telling people to do every single thing costs more people to try to get away with stuff. You gotta give them some leeway and then to make their decisions on their own thing. So to rebuild, but I know that the part we get to speak here. It's just nature.
Any other thoughts on this? Not the first one. So these, the, these are just, so minor changes that I just thought we should take note of. The requirement that tree services sign a statement, uh, is, the tree board is suggesting that not be once, but they do it annually. Which something we could tag on to the business license process, uh, just like we, whenever somebody, uh, provides for business license, there's also confirmation attachment to it. So this could be for any tree service, you just have this attachment of the, uh, the statement, uh, that we started using. Really last decade. Changes of the tree regulations. And the second one, uh, the, uh, is just, uh, reconciling the tree inventory with the assessment of, you know, what's changed as far as that, looking at the community activity, which makes sense from administrative. Any thoughts or comments, uh, Councilmember?
Just a clarification in one forty. It does mention, uh, involved in major or minor development. Is that, uh, development activity? Is that only relating to contractors? Or does that major and minor development activity relate to all of the options before contractors?
Um, I think it's, it's relating to, uh, the tree, uh, regulations define major, minor development activity. So, uh, it, it would probably be any contractor who is doing any of the, that's the way I would see it, presenting a contractor that is, uh, doing any of those activities. In areas where there are trees, uh, works to the death, in accordance with the definitions in the, uh, the tree regulations.
Okay, cause so to me that, that doesn't cover a simple tree removal, maybe, as I'm just kind of reading this definitions? Cause it talks about structures, fences, gateways, driving, clearing and grading, but it doesn't simply cover us just a single tree removal in my quick reading. So I'd like to know more about that, if that's a loophole.
Sure, we could, we could look into that and see.
So I think we want anybody working on trees to go through those that is.
Any else? Yes.
I'd just like to, uh, revisit the introduction to this whole section, uh, to the, the whole piece of code here. And I'm thinking, I remember what I asked might be added to that, that introduction. And that is the importance of trees in, um, storm waters and, um, for the health of creeks. Thinking that's what it was.
That's, that's our display of this.
Yeah, yeah, it's forty-nine.
Yeah, let's do this. Sounds without any question. We all upstairs.
Yes, I guess that's that timing question. Cause also, and maybe customer voting can chime in. I think the planning commission is looking at the reasonable use exception. And so is it possible for us to kind of move ahead with everything here except the tree diameter? And then leave the tree diameter and possibly reasonable use exception as sort of a phase two?
That, that timing wise would, could work, uh, cause I think it will take them some time to, uh, work through the reasonable use exemption. There's still, right now, it's meeting what they want.
Look, Steve, does that mean what you need from us in the answer, something to, you need preliminary head nods with the language we've submitted to Commerce, right? The nod comes back to us and then we take absolute.
Right, we, we just want to submit something to Commerce that is pretty much, uh, what you think you might adopt. So but, and I think I've heard enough to put together a draft that would just take out that particular change in the table and say, you know, you think this is what the council is going to adopt? And then they, they don't really care what's in it. You know, it's, it's compliant, the company has a plan. So, so I, I think that would work as far as, uh, the CEPA. And it really is more of an issue with CEPA because you don't want to adopt something and say it's determined to be non-significant if all of a sudden it changes the area. So, but I think it's, they've got a pretty good understanding here. So we go next.
Sure. I, I'm, uh, thanks. And I'm, I, I agree with, uh, Councilmembers Goldman and Casover about the package. Um, I would. the package. I would also throw in the 14090 section on replacement as something to be examined later. But with everything else, I'd be okay with, you know, looking for a more expedited path.
Great. Thank you, Steve.